Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Zoom webinar forum with the candidates for the South Kitsap School District Board. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, which is recording this event for later access. BCAT, Bremerton Kitsap Access Television, is also recording tonight. The public was invited to send in questions through the League's website. We've consolidated those plus others into the questions I'll ask of tonight's candidates. The questions will cover a range of topics and issues pertinent to South Kitsap schools. My name is Janet Stegmaier, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters, which celebrated its 100th anniversary last year, is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates and political parties. We'd like to invite any of you aged 16 or older, all genders, to join our organization and help support our mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. Candidates for South Kitsap School Board District 3 are Brian Picard and Anna Schroeder. District 4 candidates are Jeffrey Heffey Wilson and Greg Anderson. Thanks to all of you for stepping up to offer your skills and talents in service to the community. We'll ask that during this forum, you maintain civility with one another. Mr. Wilson was unable to attend tonight's forum, but he has provided a statement, which I'll read now. Jeffrey D. Wilson, PhD, age 53, Senior Executive Advisor at the Boeing Company. As an organizational psychologist with over 25 years of business experience, I have worked with people at all levels and in many industries across the country. I have faced a lot of difficult and sometimes outright hostile situations where I have had to use my interpersonal skills to balance the needs of disparate groups and get the people in them to pull in the same direction for the common good. My greatest strength is the ability to listen, connect, and collaborate with people to get them to accept and embrace change. This is the kind of positive change that moves an organization like SK Schools forward to achieve true greatness. As your SK Board Director, it would be my duty to partner with my fellow board members and represent our community in SK so that we can provide the learning environment and resources, schools, teachers, curriculum, necessary for unparalleled student achievement. The Board's ineffectiveness has been obvious to anyone that has attended a meeting or picked up a newspaper over the last couple of years. There has been a lot of squabbling and very little focus on what is best for our students. However, I'd wager that it's not a lack of ability, but rather a lack of willingness to work together that has been on display. While I applaud the Board's recent efforts on teaming, I highly doubt that much will change until the Voters Act removes and/or replaces board members who continue to push their divisive political agendas on what is supposed to be a nonpartisan school board. For my part, I intend to collaborate with my fellow board members to ensure better student achievement, fully fund our teachers and curriculum, and ensure that our facilities will support our growing community. This school year, we need to continue to ensure that the schools provide an open, safe, and inclusive environment. This would enable our students and their teachers to regain the ground they lost last year, build student knowledge and skills, and continue their educational journeys toward the workforce, the military, or their chosen college. Additionally, the Board needs to finally address the need to modernize our teaching facilities and get a school bond levy package on the ballot that the SK community can rally behind. We need SK Schools that are on par with our neighbors in Gig Harbor and Silverdale and stop accepting "good enough for SK" when it's clearly not. We owe it to our community to have school facilities, teachers, and curriculum we can be proud of that give our progeny the best chance of success in a classroom so that they can go take on the world. If you elect me as your SK School Board Director, I promise to put an end to the drama and grandstanding that we have seen on the school board and bring a rational approach to SK district policy. We need to continue to invest in our students, teachers, and curriculum while addressing our neglected infrastructure. I will work to make the SK Schools a draw for our community and an institution that produces the state's most capable scholars, employees, and citizens. Together, we can build SK Schools that deliver for us all. And that concludes Mr. Wilson's statement. And Mr. Anderson is still not here, but we will get started with the two that... I'm very thankful that you're here. Candidates, during tonight's format, each of you will be given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. We will go in the order your names appear on the ballot. Then I will begin the questions. Each of you, in a rotating order, will have 60 seconds to respond. If you have answered a question and have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. If you run out of time, you may finish your sentence. Our timekeeper will maintain the countdown electronic clock. Opening statement, one and a half minutes. Mr. Picard?
I successfully unmuted myself, so far, so good, right? I'm Brian Picard, and I just, I've lived in the South Kitsap area for 33-plus years. My biggest assets is my leadership, my experience in leadership and building trust, communication, listening, seeking understanding before I make decisions. I know the community, I know its pulse, I know the people around it. It gives me a keen insight, having had worked in the South Kitsap School District for 30 years. I've been on a variety of boards, both, well, all local, state, national, and even global. They have given me a lot of leadership experiences, multiple types of boards, board member and leadership roles in all of those. No other candidate has the public school or leadership experience that I do. I know other members either. As I said, I listen to understand, I seek out other people's opinions. I'm known for open, honest communication. I like to talk, which is going to be tough with this timer ticking down here, but I like to have honest, open conversations with people. It builds trust and then fosters and drives success. Again, I listen, I get along, and I respect people.
Thank you. Ms. Schroeder?
Hi, I'm Anna Schroeder. I was actually born in Bremerton and raised here in Port Orchard. My husband and I have lived in various parts of the state, and we have moved back to Port Orchard to settle down and raise our family. My husband is a teacher at John Sedgwick School District, and both of our kids are in the school district, so I feel that helps bring a present focus to my candidacy where my kids are in the district, I'm inside the problems that are happening right now, and we can look at it not only from the parent's side, but also from the teacher's side, which is an important component of all the school board decisions. Right now, I work as a RN at St. Joseph's Medical Center in the ICU down in Tacoma, and in that job, I have to balance the needs of many different people. The patient is the focus, I have all the different interdisciplinary teams that come together, and the nurse is the person who facilitates that. So I have a lot of experience getting different physicians and groups that necessarily don't agree with each other to come up with a plan that's going to make the best outcomes for the patients. I feel that I bring that strength and also that background of looking at things from scientific evidence of what's going to be best for our students and not necessarily what's going to make myself or anybody else feel the best. I also like to talk, so this is a very stressful time for me, but I am good at conflict resolution, I'm respectful and professional, and I want to get the job done as efficiently and easily as possible.
Thank you. Question one, 60 seconds. To the extent that you haven't already discussed this in your opening statement, what are the primary reasons you would like to be on the school board? Ms. Schroeder?
I keep turning off my video. You think I know how to do that after a year and a half, but still. So I would like to have a voice on the school board that comes from a young family. My children are both in elementary school. I don't necessarily feel young some cold winter mornings when my knees are a little creaky, but compared to the other candidates, I'm still relatively young. I want to bring a focus of somebody who isn't inside the system necessarily. I come from a different organization system, and we have lots of lean principles and interdisciplinary principles that can come into this and help solve some of these, as Mr. Anderson said, all the squabbling and the conflict that's been going on, because we need to get that done. The focus is the kids. I want what's best for my kids in a very selfish way, but I want what's best for every kid so that our community can be the strongest it can be.
Thank you. Mr. Picard?
Thank you. Again, I kind of will repeat myself a little bit, but I think it's important that I have 38 years of public education as a classroom teacher, principal, and district level administrator. So I know the ins and outs. I know what type of leadership the district needs from a school board, though that's not a role I've been in for, but I know from the receiving and guidance from a board, experienced that. I know that our primary focus is to help and support kids, and how do we do that? We do that by supporting staff, schools, setting policy, and not micromanaging the process. We have one employee, and that's the superintendent. And my experience in working with different people in different boards and different leaderships speaks to this and prepares me.
Thank you. Ms... Oh, question two, sorry. Again, to the extent you haven't already discussed this in your opening statement, what is your educational and career background, and how does that influence your views on public education in general and the South Kitsap School District in particular? Mr. Picard?
Should I just say what I just said? No, probably not.
Yeah, I know. It was...
I have a bachelor's degree in education from a long time ago. I have an Educational Administration Masters and, you know, years and years of training, as in the nursing profession, as education says. We all are continuing education, continually learning. I'm a lifelong learner, I'm still learning, it's important. You know, I feel that in an educated public, it's essential to our democracy, and we need to be able to give our kids a world-class education. And we do that with strong leadership. And again, I've proven that in a K-12 setting for 38 years. I've done it on a variety of boards, community, across, you know, helpline, Kitsap Community Resources. I'm set for this position.
Thank you. Ms. Schroeder?
So I'm actually in my second career. I originally, right after high school, went to Eastern Washington University and got a bachelor's degrees in music performance and music theory and composition, which did not serve me very well after 2008 when the market crashed. We decided to go back to school to be a nurse, so I went back to Olympic College, got that, and then I recently finished up my bachelor's of nursing to have a bachelor's degree in nursing as well, because I had an associate's in nursing. I've been working as a nurse for five years, and I feel that, having seen both sides of this, so I went to an art school, and I still continue to do music. I love that, that's fantastic. But then I also had to make the choice of how am I going to support my family, and I went back to a trade school and a vocational sort of job. So I understand the different needs of that, and I think that will help build the programs that we have in our school district that are going to aim our kids towards the thing they're best suited for, but also give them the tools they need to succeed in the community and in the economy, which is also a key part of it.
Thank you. Question three. The word dysfunctional has been used recently in describing the workings of the South Kitsap School Board. The recent resignation of the Board President appears to bear out this description. Would you agree that the Board has become dysfunctional, and what suggestions do you have to improve the situation? Mr. Picard?
I think it's Anna's to go first.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I did. I think... I'm sorry. All right. Ms. Schroeder, can we start the time again? Timekeeper, sorry, I goofed it up here. So go ahead, Ms. Schroeder.
Okay. Yes, dysfunctional, and not only that, I think there's not a willingness to work together, and there's a blinker on some of the directors where they only have one thing they're worried about, and they only have one thing that they're going to beat the drum for. I recognize that, especially this last year, there were some unprecedented decisions that had to be made, but there was personal feelings and personal interpersonal things that were allowed to color that situation, and that is not appropriate and should have nothing to do with how the Board works together. I also feel that they spent a lot of time debating things on what their personal views were, instead of looking at the evidence and looking at the recommendations from outside and trying to adopt the things that are needed. And this is not only for COVID stuff, but also for what are the latest educational theories, what are the latest educational guidelines that are going to give us the best results for our kids?
Thank you. Mr. Picard?
Thank you. I would agree in stating that the Board has been somewhat paralyzed, and as Ms. Schroeder said, you know, going off in different directions on different things and not following established processes and things. I was, after last Wednesday's board meeting, very, very concerned, and then I attended a training where all the candidates were invited to attend last Friday with a consultant, and a lot of progress was made. Hopefully, everybody can live up to agreements that they made so that, you know, the focus can be on same policy, listening to constituents, listening to staff, finding out, checking, making sure that the goals and direction of the district that we want to accomplish, that's the Board's job. We need to be able to listen to the experts, we need to listen to who knows the information and share it.
Thank you. Question four. The Board recently voted to hold its upcoming meetings virtually instead of in person, mainly because of protests from unmasked members of the audience when they tried to have it in person. Do you agree with this decision, and why or why not? Mr. Picard?
Oh, I get that. That's a tough one. I knew that was coming. I agree with it, because, again, the Board is having difficulty in functioning in their process, and distractions such as that are... make it that much more difficult. A lot of these things that are going on, including the mask-wearing and things, have become so politicized that it's getting in the way, it makes tough decisions even harder to do. The Health Department State has recommended, there are some mandates, again, we can get into semantics about mandates and all of that, but I think getting to the point of the Board functioning online, until we can get our processes down and making sure that we can get the work done, it's important. It's also important not to let minority rule what we're all trying to do and doing.
Thank you. Ms. Schroeder?
Yes, I think that virtual meetings are a great idea for as long as it's feasible, because, I mean, I work with COVID every time I'm at work, and I would prefer very much to have, like, to have less people get COVID and get sick and have long-term illness and/or die. So I'm all about the virtual stuff, but I think part of the problem with the protesters, like Mr. Picard said, and the minority coming in disrupting the majority, trying to do a democratic process, is that the community has lost their respect for the school board, and the school board doesn't have any authority or teeth. And so I think that's one of the big challenges we're going to face, is building that trust back up and building that respect from the community so that when the school board says, "This is our decision," the community recognizes that that's the best decision for them and their kids.
Thank you. Question five. At the end of the last board meeting, a student representative said that his agenda item had not been addressed, even though the meeting was approaching three hours in length. What are some ways that these meetings can be run more efficiently so that important issues get covered and all agenda items are addressed in a timely fashion? Ms. Schroeder?
All right, yes, I find the three, four-hour school board meetings to just be ridiculous, because frankly, I don't have time for that. I've got two young kids, I work full-time, I've got lots of stuff to do. So what needs to happen is people, the school board's directors, need to come prepared with their decision, having already done the research. They've already discussed it with their constituents, maybe they've discussed it with each other in a more informal setting. Obviously, there's rules about that that will have to be followed, and they need to come and state their position, and then have a vote, and not spend time arguing with each other or debating things that really aren't important, because they should have been taken care of before the decision was presented. That would leave more time for people to come and address concerns and to have statements so that the school board can really get some real-time feedback. There's no reason to sit for hours and hours when they just need to come together, state their opinions, and take a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Picard?
Thank you. You know, first, I'd like to say that I think it's really important that we have a student voice on the Board, and I think that's great that they are both there. They bring insight, and that's one of the things that I want to be able to do as a Board member, is to go out to schools and talk to kids, because regardless of age, five years old or 18 years old, they have some great insight and things. I agree in that the organization and how the Board operates is so critical, and that's what the training has been, but the Board needs to follow through on it. I've had training in it, I continue to have training in it. It's important that, you know, for example, the consent agenda, which there were some excellent questions that were brought up by one board member. The thing is, is that those should be brought up beforehand, so that's sort of a process of giving things. I don't have two young children like Anna does, but I do have a grandson I like to see a lot, so it's important to make the meetings efficient and effective.
Thank you. Question six. Money was reportedly spent on superfluous desks and chairs, because that's how funding had been earmarked. This seems economically and environmentally unwise. What are your thoughts on how the Board can be good stewards of the budget? Mr. Picard?
Thank you. Sorry, I was mumbling there myself, I forgot to turn off, so my apologies. You know, it's, the Board provides oversight for the citizens and the community of South Kitsap. It's critical. As I said earlier, the Board has one employee, and that's the superintendent. That, he or she then delegates the authority of different things. At the schools, obvious, to the principal and so forth and things. For financial decisions like that, it's assistance for finance and operation and things. And so it's really important that all stakeholders have a say in how things are spent. The needs at the building level, at the department level, they need to be heard. People need to provide input on what's needed, what's purchased, and then the superintendent and his or her desk and we follow through to see that those expenditures are done correctly.
Thank you. Ms. Schroeder?
So that's something I've been hearing a lot from people asking me questions about my campaign and my position on things, how we're going to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, which I totally get. I like the money that I earn, I'd like to spend it on fun stuff with my kids rather than send it to be used for whatever, but taxes are taxes, and it's the way of life, and I want to make sure those dollars are invested into our schools and our students. And I think the way to make sure the public knows that we're doing the best we can do is to be absolutely transparent with the money. And there are legal guidelines from the state about what money can be used for which things, whether it can be curriculum or hardware or furniture or infrastructure sort of things, and being very upfront with the public is saying, "This is why we're using the money for this," and then making sure that as a district inside between our buildings and our programs, we are talking with each other, so that way we don't buy too many of one thing and not enough of another thing. And as Mr. Picard said, being really open with the superintendent about what is the most important thing to spend our money on, and what's the thing that's going to give us the most value for our taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Excuse me. Question seven. How good of a job have the South Kitsap Schools done to prepare students to live in a diverse community and get along with people from different racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds? How have claims that K-12 schools teach or plan to teach critical race theory been a challenge? Ms. Schroeder?
Oh, my gosh, I am exhausted from critical race theory. That was the only question I got before the primary, was about critical race theory. So from personal experience with my own children that have been in school, I have been very impressed with the school district and how they're teaching different cultures, different holidays, and really kind of being very inclusive and welcoming to all different religions and races and ideas. My sons bring home all sorts of worksheets and pamphlets and art projects, and it's just great to see them learning those things and being exposed to those sorts of things, not only through the curriculum, but through music and through the food that they're eating and that sort of thing. I think the best thing that the school district can do is just continue to say, "We welcome you, we want people to be here. Tell us your concerns. If you're feeling like your particular denomination or your particular culture is not being represented, then let's do it. Bring it to the school board, bring it to the teachers. Let's be as inclusive as possible," and I think that's what's going to prepare them for the real world and the diversity that they're going to face.
Thank you. Mr. Picard?
I believe overall that we're doing a pretty good job of it. We can always do better, you know, always strive to do better, particularly in that area, really any area, but that one should be a real focus. I know, because I was involved with establishing district guidelines with the policies and all, in my time at district office, with the zero tolerance, zero tolerance of bullying, racism, sexism, you know, all of those things. It's important that we do talk, and we do have open lines of communication, because when there is a problem, when there is an issue, we can get to it right away, address it and take care of it. Don't stick your head in the sand, say, "Oh, that doesn't happen in South Kitsap." Things do happen, and they're not always good things that happen. And so by establishing relationships and communications, we can address things when they're needed, and that's one of the importance of the student reps.
Thank you. Question eight. Several times in the past, the Board has placed a bond issue on the ballot to build a second high school, only to see the measure narrowly fail. Do you want to see such a bond in the future, and if so, how will you know when the timing is right? Mr. Picard?
Yeah, that's another one we anticipated, I'll bet. And yes, I think we need, we need, you know, improvements in facilities, new buildings, new high school, a second high school. When is the timing right? That's probably the multimillion-dollar question and things, but again, the community right now doesn't have a whole lot of trust in the district or particularly the Board. That has to be established, that has to be built and cultivated, and that, to me, is, and I'm a very, you know, I like to connect with people, sit down and talk with people and find out. I think it's important that we have those informal chats, just a conversation and getting people, and that's how you build up that trust, build up the respect of each other, and then we take a look at it and from input, because there's a facilities review committee right now. We need to have 100% pure transparency with the community and staff.
Thank you. Ms. Schroeder?
Yes, I agree. The trust is going to need to be there before people will support a big thing like a bond for a second high school, because as we've seen with the votes, is people have decided yes or no, and there's not a lot of wiggle room in between. They're not going to be swayed by whatever's being said propaganda-wise. So my plan for that is, we're going to start small. We're going to do small capital improvement projects. We're going to do small things to retrofit or upgrade the schools, and then every step of the way be very open and clear. Use local contractors when we can, so that way we can account for the money, show how we're being efficient, find ways to make things more cost-effective and more valuable for our taxpayer dollars, and then when we've done enough of those over the next couple of years, say, "Okay, we're ready to do a big thing. We're ready to build a second high school. We're ready to build two new high schools, because we want to modernize our school district. This is what we've done to prove that we can do this well and use your money in a responsible way. Let's get the support for this and get this moving."
Thank you. Question nine. Discuss the challenges in the South Kitsap District, and what important improvements you'd like to see happen. Ms. Schroeder?
So important improvements, let's start with technology, since that's the thing that our kids are going to be using more and more and more of. My kids already are all over tablets and screens all the time, is we need to make sure that we are providing them with the tools that they can get online to get these resources, that teachers have the tools to do the advanced technological lessons and things, really have the smart boards and stuff like that. We want to make sure our staff... We want to make sure our staff is trained to do that, we want to make sure we have the facilities and the wifi capability and all sorts of that. I don't know anything about that, I do human systems, not technological systems, so that's something that I will have to learn more about. And then improvement for the nebulous things, the curriculum, we need to look at our curriculums and figure out what's going to provide the value for our students. But then also what's going to give them the best life experiences? What are things they want to be interested in, in the arts or in the sciences? Doesn't all have to be about what's going to get them a job and what's going to get them into college. We need to provide a, a well-rounded education that lets them explore these things so they can decide for themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Pickard.
Thank you. I, again, I'll go back to how kind of I finished my last, the response to the last thing, which is, is building the challenges or building that trust and that transparency of relationships and connections and those types of things, because again, we need those, those are so vital to getting that. Facilities, you know, it's huge, we're, our newest facilities are thirty plus years old. We need to upgrade and we continue to do that with some, but there needs to be a lot more done. The, the, the tech part, I, you know, agree, I think Anna's stealing my answers here, but that's okay. It's, it's good to agree, but the technology, but not only the technology and the infrastructure that's there, but how to use it. I can remember back when, I shouldn't admit this, but computers were first being established and whatnot, but people didn't know how to use them. So staff and students need, need to know how to use them. And then also we need to be able to provide skills and knowledge for jobs that don't exist for our kids.
Thank you. Uh, question 10, when considering budgeting, administration and health issues, what input would you seek from teachers and staff before making decisions about classroom and building management? Mr. Pickard.
Well, I think it's, it's in, input and ideas and, and direction, things has to come from the staff. That's, that's where, and, and where it applies with community and parents and all. We've got to take their, that, that input and that input has to go to school staff, administrators and then shared with the board. Board, board members on that initial stage should be listening and listening to the points of view, the ideas, direction. Because then we're listening to the experts. Then we're to, to those that are, that are right there in the frontline, working with kids, working with community, making the things work. We need to make sure that that communication is streamlined, that we're hearing it, we're hearing other people and, and responding to it. If we can follow through with it, great, if we can't, we need to be able to, to state why and, and what we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder.
So people ask me quite frequently why I didn't become a teacher like my husband and that's because that is not a skill set that I am strong in. I like to teach small groups, one-on-one, I like adult learners, but I am not a little kid teacher. So definitely like Mr. Pickard said, is getting that input and what they, what a teacher actually needs, what a kindergarten teacher, what a high school vocational teacher needs, what are they going to do? And what are they, what tools are they going to need, what programs are they going to need? But also as we're looking at these new schools, we're looking at new infrastructure, is thinking about the flexibility. What's going to change in twenty years? We don't know, what about the population where sometimes my youngest goes to Alala? Sometimes that school is tiny and sometimes it's big, just based on where the kids are. So what can we do to make our schools as flexible as possible to accommodate new ideas, new programs, shift around resources as needed? So that every student in every school gets the same education and gets the same opportunities.
Thank you. Question 11, what is your take on these curriculums? Wit and wisdom, which is English language arts, eureka math and invigils math? Ms. Schroder.
So I am learning these curriculums at the same speed as my kids usually. The wit and wisdom I've really liked, I know there have been concerns with some age appropriate reading in the later elementary into middle school age. But I do remember when I was in high school and they were going to read snowing, snow falling on cedars and there was that conversation about age appropriate. And then a couple of years later, there was another one, so that's just something that we need to just keep an eye on. Most of the people who've brought it to the attention is the teachers have read through their curriculum and said, hey, I don't know if this is appropriate for my age group. But other than that, the wit and wisdom I like, it looks at things from a figurative and literal point of view, it exposes them to lots of literature and I think that's really important. The math is fine for me, I kind of like math because there's a right and a wrong answer and it's pretty easy. I know that's not everybody's favorite subject, but I like math and so I appreciate the different ways of looking at it and learning how to do it. As my kids advance, they are coming up against some roadblocks, but I felt the teachers have been able to provide them with different strategies so that they can work through this. So overall, I like the curriculums that we've been using.
Thank you, Mr. Pickard.
All right, well, well, Anna's got one up on me because she's got kids and she's working it, so there you go. But I do, I do know enough about the curriculum that they're all search based, that they've been proven to use current practices, up-to-date practices and things. Really, the, the real biggie, and I always felt this in my, my twenty-seven years as a, as a principal, is that you put your resources in your people. You can have any curriculum in the world, well, almost, a good quality curriculum. And, but if the teachers don't know how to use it, then we have problems. So that training, staff development and that's ongoing, it's not just in the, you know, before school starts year one and that's it. There's a process of, of selecting curriculum that involves staff, community, parents, administrators. I do know that, that the subject areas are integrated, which makes it more real world and that's really important. And, and we need to make sure that we have teachers' opinions and, and ideas before things are adopted. But I hear very good things about these curriculum, sorry everyone, one minute.
Hey, thank you. Question 12, Washington State is requiring that all public schools provide comprehensive sexual health education by the 2022, 2023 school year that is age appropriate medically and scientifically accurate and inclusive of all students. What is your position on this requirement? Mr. Pickard.
I think it's important that, that students have the, the right information, know where they can go. I know that this has been, become a political topic and if people really want to see what's in the curriculum and how age appropriate it truly is, they need to be able to reach out to their, their, their child's schools, the principal, their teachers and say, hey, can I take a look at this? Let me see this and that's what's so very important, people need to see what's there. I have begun the process of reviewing it, I haven't seen anything that I think is, is not age appropriate. I've been told like by a couple of people that they're using pornographic, quote pornographic comics, pictures for kindergarteners, which is absolutely not true. So there's a whole lot of things, rumors, you know, my friend down the street's neighbor told me this and things, so find out. It's important that it's there for the kids and where they can go for resources, which is usually first and foremost, family, parents.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder.
Yeah, so as a mom with young kids, I recognize that this is a very sensitive topic and I've kind of wrestled with it, like, ooh, what am I going to, you know, talk to my kids about? But as a healthcare professional and a health educator, knowing about your body is a critical part of your health and that includes all parts of our body, even your reproductive organs. So teaching how our body works and how it functions is important. Then we get into the sexual part of it, which is completely separate than the actual physical part of our body, the physical bits of our body. And when it comes tied up in those emotions and identity, that's something that we need to treat with care. And what I've seen in my kids so far, when they've been doing health sciences and things like that, is it's been very appropriate. The education is very age appropriate and I think more people need to recognize, and I'm trying to get this out, that children don't always have a safe place to ask those questions in their own family. And so the school can provide that resource for them so that they can ask these questions and get realistic, honest and safe answers.
Thank you. Question 13, Washington State requires that the curriculum since time immemorial tribal sovereignty in Washington State be taught. This material has been endorsed by all twenty-nine federally recognized tribes. How effectively has the South Kitsap District implemented this curriculum? Ms. Schroder.
So I haven't seen any worksheets or anything come home with that specific title on them. But I do know that my kids are learning about the tribal history and the, the true history of what happened, not the kind of colonizer whitewashed history is what I've heard it called. And things like Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day and kind of recognizing the value that those cultures had in our communities and in our nation so that their experiences aren't erased or considered not as important. I think the more of that we can do, the better. Always tempering with the, yes, maybe you're not a part of this minority group, but that doesn't mean it's your fault. We just need to have better choices going forward because we can't learn to do better in the future if we don't look at past mistakes and make difference choices.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Picard, Pickard, sorry.
That's all right, I've been called worse. So, um, you know, one of the, one of the things with, with our history, I believe our, our local and national and really world history, the true history needs to be taught and presented. We, we should be sharing that, teaching that and teaching kids how to think, how to process those types of things. Getting back to more specific of your question, a year before I retired, so in 2017, the, the district joined or, or worked together with, with, with the Suquamish tribe to partner and to do some things. Too many times in the past, and I know when I was teaching back in the eighties, there were dating myself there, that it was separate and, and Native Americans got Native American lessons and it was segregated and it shouldn't be. We have recognized at Indigenous People's Day, that's just, I think, a name and I think that's good. But we need to be assured that we're respecting all people and all cultures and our kids get exposed to it. I think we could do a better job, it's like anything else, we're doing okay, but we can do a lot better.
Thank you. Uh, the last question, question 14, what do you think you can bring to the South Kitsap School Board that others can't? Mr. Pickard.
Well, I bet you could fill in the blanks on this one and that's, that's my my time in public school, thirty-eight years, wide variety of leadership experiences and demonstrated leadership, successful leadership. My skill sets, they set me apart from anybody that's currently on the board or would be on the board. My ability to truly make connections with people. Listen, as I said in the beginning, I listen to understand. I want to know differing opinions, different ideas, because that's how we make the best decisions. Is, is by knowing and understanding and communicating and building relationships and that of course starts with respect. Again, my leadership roles and the variety of boards have given me the experiences, my experience. I'm ready to take this on and do, do a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder.
So, uh, my main strength that I'm going to bring in is that I'm bringing an outside view. Somebody that's not involved in the school district itself. I have my husband who tells me the stuff that's going on, so I kind of see it from his end, but then I also see it from outside as a mother and just somebody who is experiencing the school district as it directly affects me right now. The choices that the school board makes affects my day-to-day life, affects when and where my kids go to school, how they go to school and the things that they learn. I also spend a lot of my days at work, as I said, managing care for patients. And this is facilitating decisions between different physician groups, between different therapies. This is talking with the families and finding out what they want for their loved one and how, what the loved ones goals are. Because sometimes the goal is curative and sometimes the goal is comfort and to allow that person to pass peacefully. So deciding what is best and helping people make those difficult decisions is part of my job. And having that ability to facilitate and to relate to people is the strength that I'll bring.
Thank you, thank you both so very much for being here. Voters, oh, wait, 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 we have a closing statement. How could we forget that? All right, so you're going to have ninety seconds for a closing statement and we will start with Ms. Schroder.
Uh, first off, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's coming and everybody who's going to vote, that's so important. And I am a huge suffragette fan and I read all books about the suffragette movement. And when I read about the time before women had the vote, it makes my hair want to catch on fire because I just get so angry. So I really appreciate people taking the time to be involved in this process and to be voters. I am always open for questions, so please send me your questions and I'll address them as best I can from what I know, what my experience is. I know that I don't have a lot, this is my first elected position I'm running for, so I will be learning as I go. But I want to bring that excitement and that willingness to learn and be flexible to the position because that's really what it needs. It needs some fresh ideas and some fresh viewpoints brought into this system that's struggling and not really giving us the value that we need. I am not really for one thing or not against one thing, I don't have a political agenda because I want to be open to all the ideas. And I recognize that everybody has a different background, a different life experience and that, that will bring different things to your needs and your plans for your family and your kids. And I want to hear about that and I want to try and support that as best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Pickard.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, you guys have been great in getting the school board candidates, as well as the other issues out there and candidates for different offices and things like that, you guys have done that for years and years and it's absolutely fantastic. I want to thank Anna, one, for, for filing for office and, and being a strong candidate as well. Sorry Anna, but I think I'm a stronger candidate, but, but Anna is, is an intelligent person, I have high respect for the, the position that she's in and nursing my daughter-in-law's nurse as well. So I just want to restate my public education background, thirty-eight years, all the different boards, experiences and leaderships and things. And there's only one person on the board currently that has any type of educational background, that's Liz Seabron, who either Anna or I will be replacing. I agree, I don't think that all board members should be, have an educational background, in fact, not at all. I think it needs to have that diverse opinions and, and perspectives and ideas and things. But yeah, but however, by I'm being elected, I would be that person who brings that perspective, say, okay, this decision, this is how that would be, how would it impact the schools, how would it impact kids, staff and then in, in the community and things? I believe my experiences and skill set sets me apart. I'm, I'm ready to take on this job and I appreciate it. And again, thank you League of Women, League of Women Voters and Anna for being here tonight.
Thank, thank you candidates, thank you for, for being here. Voters, hopefully this forum has helped you choose your candidate. Ballots for the November second general election will be mailed out by this Friday, October fifteenth, so keep an eye out for them. The League is encouraging voters to vote early and return their ballots as soon as possible, preferably to one of Kitsap County's twenty-five ballot drop boxes. Their locations can be found on the Kitsap Auditor's website. The ten Kitsap candidate forums over the first two weeks of October have been or will be recorded and links to the videos will soon be on our website at L W, L W V dash Kitsap dot org. BCAT will also be broadcasting the recordings at a time to be determined. Special thanks to Kitsap Regional Library for their support. Please encourage others to view the forums and vote. Thank you for attending and good night.